Connecting to the cloud and it is recording. It's it's pretty amazing how Zoom just works like magic, you know. Seemingly, nothing really fails with Zoom.
Except for the Zoom bomb attacks, which they have a fixed now.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Yeah, that is bizarre. Okay, good. So let's get going. This is our fourth small business town hall meeting. And we have been talking about lots of tax issues, about the stimulus package, and lots of great information in these discussions. Very interactive. We have had some pretty good participation. And we have more and more people who are joining this because there is seemingly a gap in terms of information. You know, there is, you would think that there is an information overload with coronavirus. But unfortunately, there is a lot of confusion. And all these stimulus package offerings, it has been as clear as mud. So that's the reason why we have been planning these seminars, these webinars, to bring people together, especially small businesses who are coming up with very intricate questions that apply to their business. And our experts have been answering these questions very, very well. So it's it's great to have Gary and Harvey, the dream team from from Numbers Guru. They are here today. But let's me quickly start by summarizing as to where we are in terms of how this stimulus package has been structured. So as we all know, on March 27, President Trump basically signed this, which is H R 746. And the CARES Act also Phase Three, that provides about $2.3 trillion that has been rolled out to the economy. And there is actually a Phase Four coming. And the Phase Four is about infrastructure. And that is coming together, hopefully will be signed in the next week or so. I will find out. Now, let's talk about the components of this CARES Act as it applies to the small businesses. So there is obviously the Paycheck Protection Program, which you can apply through the banks. And it provides $350 billion. So apparently, on the very first day of application, the Bank of America, first weekend, I would say, they actually took in almost like $30, $35 billion worth of applications, 10% of this.
And they were the first bank, first bank to come up on the system live.
Yes, that was Bank of America. And Wells Fargo followed soon behind. And they they took in about $10 billion worth of application. And they apparently have some regulatory cap to assets. So they they basically stopped their loan applications after they had hit that $10 billion number. Now, lots of the other credit unions, they're still sort of figuring out, you know, how they would do it. And they have been contacting customers, basically a specific profile of customers, and reaching out to them to basically allow them to submit the application. And in the meantime, there has been a little bit of an angst developing with small business owners. You know, my bank doesn't take my application. Where, what do I do? How do I do that? And sometimes the application wasn't been, wasn't like really getting a confirmation. They were not getting a confirmation number. And people were trying on different browsers. So you know, to, it has been a little bit of a pain, unfortunately. Now, let's talk also about the economic disaster loans. So so basically, it's the Economic Injury Disaster Loans at $10 billion. And that is, that has been appropriated. So $350 billion for the Paycheck Protection Program. And about $10 billion for EIDL. And in the EIDL, you have to apply through the Small Business SBA and through the SBA site. And when you apply, you are hopefully automatically approved for $10,000, which is yours to keep. So that's a pretty good feature. The dollars are pretty limited. Now, I do hear that these dollars would be expanded eventually. So we'll see if that happens. Now, also, when you look at, there are other components that we haven't talked about much. But we have the for security practitioners, you know, there is a money that has been rolled out and direct funds for COVID-19 response and mission-related funding. For example, $20 million to FBI, $15 million to the DEA, and $15 million to the US Marshal Services. So there are lots of components in there. And and then let's talk about the manufacturing, which we haven't talked about much. And but an additional $50 million will be distributed among the 51 US Department of Commerce Manufacturing Partnership Centers to help small and medium-sized manufacturers recover from the economic impacts of COVID-19. So as you can tell, there is a lot of information out there. And it becomes, let's just do it. But what I'll do is let me unmute everybody and then we'll get. And Gary, you might have to unmute yourself because I'm going to mute everybody. And then you guys can unmute yourself. Okay. So did I, okay, I'm still live. I'm not muted yet. I'm not muted. So let's continue this conversation. And we are talking about small business opportunities with the stimulus package. We see a few more people have joined in. So this is the perfect time. We can see that Gary and Harvey, they have their presentation deck lined up. So why don't we get going with the presentation? Let's, so the folks on the on the call who have joined in, my suggestion is to put in your questions on the chat window. And we will like to get through pretty much every question today. So with that, let me turn it over to Beyond Numbers Guru, the team that is here. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to this Beyond Numbers Guru Business Support for COVID-19 Businesses and Advisory Services. My name is Gary Tassar. I am a chartered accountant from India, CPA passed. But I was in IT for almost 20 years. And that's how I met Rishi Kumar in IBM, 14, 15 years in IBM. And about four years ago, I started back my accounting practice. And then Harvey, my nephew, he joined me. He's a CPA. And we are jointly, we both have small, come from small business families. We have some small businesses here and back in India also. And now we are helping these small businesses because we know that we have the DNA of the small business. So our firm primarily is a accounting firm, but we are tech savvy accountant. We have knowledge of all the different apps which can help small business along with the taxes and accounting. And then in the last six, six to seven months, we have been focusing on cash flow because we are fearing that recession is going to be coming. And we're going to be talking about in one of our, in a couple of weeks, about how cash flow and other things can happen. But for now, let's start with the COVID packages. And I let Harvey take over.
Oh, hi, this is Harvey. So the CARES Act, there's a lot of benefits for individuals and businesses. But my presentation is going to be mainly on some of the loan packages that were in the CARES Act for small business owners. There was three loan packages in the CARES Act. The first, the major one being the Paycheck Protection.
Harvey, I'm so sorry to interrupt. You know, but I can see that, you know, the the slides that we see, you see the the slide that you're talking to. And then you have the the follow-on slide, which is also displayed. It's dominating the screen. So if it is possible for you to click on some of these options and just display the slide you're talking to, that will blow it up and makes it easy for people to see those slides.
Yeah. On my screen is just showing the main.
Display settings.
On my, it's showing the main one.
Yes, and I can.
Is that?
No, perfect.
Is it good?
I like this. Good.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go back to slide number one.
So let's start from the beginning then. All right. So like I said, the CARES Act, there was three, there's many benefits for individuals and for business owners. But mainly, what we're going to present today is the different packages for the small business owners. So there was the main package, which was the loan program, which was the Paycheck Protection Program, which provides loan forgiveness for retaining employees. The second SBA loan package that was in the CARES Act was the Emergency Injury Disaster Loan, which basically gave people the opportunity to apply online on the SBA website and get up, advance up to $10,000. And once, if they go through the rest of the process, they can get a maximum loan of $2 million. And the third relief that they provided in the CARES Act was for existing SBA loan holders that are, that have a 7A or a 504 loan or microloans, which basically they're extending the payments. I'm sorry, not extending. They're waiving the payments for the next six months. So basically, the SBA is automatically going to make the principal, the interest, any, if there's any fees on these loans for the next six months. And if you take out any of these loans before December 27, 2020, they're also going to make the payments on those loans for the next six months. So the first one I'm going to talk about is the Paycheck Protection Program. So the main purpose of the Paycheck Protection Program is to avoid layoffs. The government is basically saying that, look, we know your business has declined. You don't have any revenue. We're going to help you out. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to take, we're going to average your 12 months of payroll for 2019. If you existed in 2019. Or if you're a new business, they're going to take the first two months of 2020. And they're going to average it. And based on the average, they're going to multiply by 2.5 to get you eight weeks of payroll, plus the half is there for the payroll taxes to help you sustain the employees so you don't lay them off. And once everything gets back to normal, those employees are with you. So you don't have wasting time rehiring employees, retraining them. So that's the main purpose of the Paycheck Protection Program. So some of the highlights, it's a two-year loan with the interest rate of 1%. There's no loan payments for the first six months. There's no collateral or personal guarantee required, which is a little different than the the Emergency Injury Disaster Loan, where there is a personal guarantee required. If you get a loan of higher than $25,000 or if, and there's might be collateral required as well if the loan amount is over 200K. The other beauty about this loan is there's no fees. SBA will pay the lenders and other, any of the fees. So there's no fees. And plus, if you receive the EIDL loan already, you can refinance that into the PPE loan. And the good thing about this is if you use it, which we're going to go over in the next couple of slides, for payroll and 25% up to every utilities, rent, the loan is going to become a grant. So who are the eligible businesses? It's any small business with less than 500 employees. Or they have also extended it for some restaurants and hotels, which is 500 employees per location. So those, even though they might have total more than 500 employees, they will still qualify for this loan as well. They have also extended this to independent contractors, Uber drivers, any, any other self-employed individuals are also eligible for this Paycheck Protection Program. So how are they going to calculate how much loan can you get? So basically, the way they're going to do it is if you've been an existing business since 2019, they're going to take your 12 month, if you've been in 12 months during that year, they're going to divide your total payroll for the year, which is your 940. Say it's 120,000. They're going to divide it by 12. And that gives you a monthly average of 10,000, for example. That amount, you're going to times it by 2.5. So you have a total loan amount of 25,000. So basically, that's how much they're going to lend you is 25,000. If you're a seasonal employer, say you have different seasons, they're going to use a 12-week period from February 19 or March 1st to June 30 to figure out how much, what your average is for that period. And if you're a new business, like I said, that hasn't existed before June 30th, they're going to take the first two months of 2020, which is January to February 29th. So the basically, the formula is, it's the same for everybody. It doesn't matter if you're a seasonal employee or business. They're going to take the average based on the number of months during that year, divided by that, those months. And then once they get that monthly average, they're going to times it by 2.5 to get how much your loan amount is going to be. Maximum loan amount is 10 million, but most of the small businesses is going to be much lower than that. So what counts as payroll cost? So a lot of people are confused. I'm sorry. What counts as payroll's cost? So basically, a lot of people thinks it's just the gross pay amount, which is not correct. What they're including in the payroll cost is salaries, wages, commissions, tips. And it also includes employee benefits. Say that you employ insurance premiums for your employer. Those are included in gross amount. Retirement benefits, vacation pay, medical sick leave, all those stating local taxes assessed on compensation, that is also added to the total gross payroll amount as well. For independent contractors and self-employed individuals, what they're going to do is they're going to take the net earning, which is on Schedule C, is you get your gross minus your expenses, you get to net income. And then they're going to divide that number by 12. Say, say it's capped at 100,000. Say you make, for example, 36,000 is your net on your Schedule C. You're going to divide that by 12 to get $3,000. And that's going to be your monthly wages for self-employed individual. And then they're going to times that by 2.5 to get a total loan amount of 7,500. The thing about self-employed I wanted to add right now is if you apply for the Paycheck Protection Program and you're self-employed and you get this loan, you cannot at the same time apply for unemployment benefits. So either you take the unemployment benefits, unemployment, or you apply for this loan. Because the main purpose of this loan is, is not to get people profit. It's to help them to gain the loss of payroll, you know, during the time where they're, for self-employed individual, their payroll is a little different than, you know, a W-2 employee, which gets a monthly check. For so self-employed people, their payroll is basically what they make after paying their expenses. So that's why they're saying is if you take the PP loan for self-employed individual, you cannot apply for unemployment benefits. So you got to choose either between this and either applying for unemployment benefits or getting this loan. And you got to make a decision based on the numbers and what works out better for you as well. What is not counted as payroll cost is? Lot of people, there's a lot of people that file S Corps and C Corps. And what they do is they don't pay themselves a salary. So basically, they just have their net income. They don't have any wages. They have their regular standard expansions, expenses, operating expenses. And then they have their net, net income, which goes on the K1. And they file on the personal taxes, which is good because they're not, they're not paying any payroll taxes. But it's really bad because now when they're trying to apply for the PP, the Paycheck Protection Program, they don't qualify because they don't have any wages. So that's one thing. S Corp owner or C Corp and that don't have any wages, you do not qualify for this program. So what can, once you do get the loan, what can you use it for? 75% of the proceeds, so say you get $100,000 PP loan, 75,000 you have to use for payroll. The rest, $25,000, you can use it for mortgage interest payments, rent and lease payments, utilities. So utilities, what they're saying is it includes telephone, internet, water, electric, gas. And all these obligations have to be before February 15. So if you sign a new rental lease in March 15, 2020, that will not qualify. Any, all these agreements and obligations must be before February 15, 2020. The other thing is, what you want to make sure is, once you do get the loan and which will help you when you go back to the bank to get the forgiveness, is you want to put this money in a separate account, which makes it easy for you to track exactly what you use the money for. So what I would do is if you get the money from this loan, you deposit it into a new business bank account, which is a new account. You pay all your payroll through that account, you pay your rent payments. And that way, you have the records. And once you try to go back to the bank, it's a clear statement and there's no confusion that you're mixing different money, you know, the money you had in the account before you got this loan. And so there's no issues and there's no confusion regarding that. So how do you apply and what records are you, are required for this? You must apply through the bank, which is an SBA lender, and you must have a relationship. So a lot of the banks, like, you know, Rishi has already talked about this, that they must, a lot of them are requesting, like Bank of America was, when initially they started last week, was that you had to have a business checking account with them. And a lot of the banks are still requesting that you have some kind of relationships. The best way to do is whoever you bank with your business, that's the bank you want to go to to apply for this loan. And majority of these banks are SBA approved lenders. So, so for this, you just need to make sure and go to the the bank you do business with. That's the first step. What documents do you need? For W-2 companies, that includes S Corps, C Corps partnerships. You want to get your payroll processor records for 2019 and the first three months of 2020. Also, you want to get your tax filings, Form 941, which is a quarterly report for 2019. And now, since we're in April, you can also get it for 2020 as well. You want to get the 940, which is the federal unemployment tax form for 2019. And the W-3, that's obviously also going to be for 2019. So those are the records you're going to need for if you're a company with W-2 wages. Independent contractors and self-employed individuals, they're going to look at Form 1990, 1099 miscellaneous, and also schedule copy of the Schedule C. If you haven't filed your taxes, you wouldn't want to give them a profit and loss statement. So some of the questions they're asked is, a lot of people are saying, well, the CARES Act is saying 12 months. Some are requiring 2019, some are requiring April. Basically, from the last 12 months, which are year-to-date, which is March 31st, 2020, going back to April 1st, 2019. So this is, it depends, even though there's been a lot of confusion. So you want to get the documents your bank is requesting. Since the bank is the one that's going to approve the loan and do the underwriting, you want to work with your bank and get the records. So there's not, there's not a written statement that, look, it has to be from January 1st, 2019 to December. It could also be from April 1st, 2019. And that's where you want to work with your lender and see exactly what documents they need. The other thing was, which I have gone through this as well, what's included in the wages? It includes 401K and health benefits. So any costs that employer incurs aren't part of the employee, aside from just their regular wages, that needs to be get added to the gross to calculate exactly how much your average monthly payroll is. What's included in the payroll taxes? A lot of people were confused when originally came out that federal taxes would also be included. But that's not correct. All they're including is state and local payroll taxes. Federal taxes are not excluded, which includes social security and Medicare taxes. Can you apply for more than one loan? Uh, no. So what you want to do is the bank, you want to start with one lender and it's just a one loan. So you can only apply one time with one bank and that's pretty much it. If you try to do that, it's going to create issues. Is there any questions?
I have been answering in the text chat. We have, we'll give you our contact numbers. If you have a question, you can contact us as well.
Okay, okay. So the next program I want to start with is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. And this is where a lot of people, and you have heard, and you know, that all you have to do is apply and get advanced up to 10,000. So this is basically administered by the SBA directly. So you go on the SBA website, which I will, in the couple of next slides, I'll have the link to them. So basically, what this is, it's a, it's a hardship loan that, look, due to this disaster, which is a coronavirus, I need money to fund my business daily operations. You can use this money, if you get it, for payroll, accounts payable, any type of payroll, and also rent and/or any of the obligations to meet your operating expenses. The main thing is right now, originally when this package came out, I mean, the program came out, they were saying that they would get the money in three days. But we have seen, and you know, pretty much people have been waiting for a week, more than a week. It's just with the demand they have right now, it's taking them a little bit longer than three days to administer. And there's also issues with that. It says it's up to 10,000. When the law wasn't written, it was saying that you can get up to 10,000. But it's based on the depression of the SBA, how much actually they're going to give you. Depending on, they have a special formula. And there's no text out there which highlights exactly what that formula is on based on what metrics, they're going to advance you to 10,000. So I'm guessing there, it's based on revenue, your operating monthly expenses. I'm guessing that they divide your revenue minus your cost expenses and see how much cash flow you need. And and there's latestly, there's been out content out there that's saying that they have now restricted it to $1,000 per employee. So say you're a company, when you fill out that application, you put that you only have two employees or three employees, that the maximum you could get is $1,000 per employee. So say you have three, the maximum they're going to advance to you is $3,000. Now understand, this program is not limited to 10,000. So just because it says it's 10,000, that's just an advance that they're going to give you. If you go through this whole process, meaning that once they advance you and then later on, they're going to request other business documents to you, from you, you, this loan can be big as $2 million. And the interest rate on this is about 3.75 in the terms around 30 years. So this is a real good program for small business to consolidate it because of restrictions and requirements are going to be much far less than getting, going through a regular SBA loan. So like I said, the loan amounts are capped at 2 million. The interest rate is 3.75. The terms, you can get up to 30 years. The advance is 10,000, but that's within, to get you going. If you go through the whole process, getting underwriting and all that, you can qualify up to 2 million based on, you know, which, if you can afford that much kind of debt service. Who qualifies? There's lesser restrictions on ED rather than getting like a microloan or 7A or 504, which is mostly based on real estate. All businesses with fewer than 500 employees qualify. Self-employed individual, independent contractors also qualify for this loan as well. Right here is the link, which will upload as well on our Facebook. It's directly applied through the SBA website. So like I said, there was a lot of questions. And initially, people thought that once they filled out this application online, that they'll automatically, within three days, they would get a $10,000 grant, which is not true. Right now, most of the people haven't even got it yet, which have applied over a week. Now slowly, things are coming out that, okay, this is going to be limited to $1,000 per employee. And it's up to a maximum of 10,000 advance. And it's on the depression of the SBA, how much they want to advance you to. So they don't have to advance you 10,000. It's just up to 10,000 if they feel like it. If you apply for an injury disaster loan, does it exclude you fine for the PP loan? No, not. You can apply for the EIDL loan and say you get a $10,000 advance. That grant money will be reduced from, say, later on, you apply for the Paycheck Protection Program. Say you got a $25,000 loan on that. When you, it comes time to forgive that, say you use it for payroll, they're only going to forgive 15,000 because they're going to minus the 10,000 from the $25,000, which is already granted to you through the EIDL program. So I'm now pass this on to Gary and he's going to talk a little bit, what are the things you can do, you know, and how we can help you as well with this.
Thanks, Harvey. So folks, how do you keep your business going during COVID time? So we have a four-step process, which we talk about it. So basically, the small businesses, they are under tremendous pressure. And revenues lost, productivity decreased, supply shortages. And your inbox is coming with a lot of messages coming from COVID help and so on. Since we are from small business families, we care about small businesses. And we have, because we have an accounting and IT background, we are tech savvy accountants. So we can understand. So the first principle which we use is understand your financial position. So basically, you may know your business and your CPA or accountant may give you your PNL. But do they ever make you understand what it, what does it mean? So we will do a forecast for you, one or more. And we may create a couple of what-if scenarios because everything is so fluid. And then we'll give you some guidance. With this guidance, you can understand where your position is. And let me give you a quick example. We got hired by a construction company. We never did construction. And when they heard us, our presentation, and then when we, we got hired, I said, why did you hire us? And you are the people, you never talked about debit, credit or accounting. You talked about where our business is and where we want to go. So this, you need to understand where you are at this time. Pretty much, everybody knows cash is low. Pretty much everybody knows cash is low. So we help you understand, do the forecasting for you and then give you information about how to uh manage your business. And then also know your option, we've been using this strategy for our e-commerce customer. Cut, reduce and keep strategy, basically the C, R and K. Basically, we know your books and we can, if a new customer, we can review their books and we can ask them, these are the. Expenses which we think we, you need to talk about it and you can cut some of them. And some of them you can reduce the expenses. Some of them have to be kept, some expenses which are required for the business, you keep them. So you mark them, then mark them C, R and K, and then even in the books, we, we do it as this and we help you manage those expenses. And then of course, we, Harvey talked about the SBA loan and all the packages, you can uh apply them and we'll guide you through them. And then lastly, you have to stay focused and leave all the accounting, taxes, numbers. And to us and we can help you with that. And I keep saying we are tech savvy accountant because we have knowledge of multiple apps, about five hundred different apps, which helps in the operations of the business. Along with the accounting and taxes. So we help, for example, for our own purpose, we used an app called True Bill and from that we understood. There are multiple uh bill expenses or subscriptions which we have signed and we are not even using it, but they're ultimately being charged to a credit card. So those kind of things, you are, we definitely need to cut them. And we are cutting in our in-house and suggesting other customers also. So you stay focused on your business and leave the uh, the heavy lifting, the backend work to us and we can help you in, in that perspective.
And I wanted to add a couple of things, a few things, and I just want to clear this up. So basically, this is your options, um, say you're S corp, you're C corp, you're a partnership. So basically for you guys, for those companies, what they're going to look at for the Paycheck Protection Program is your wages. And if you're a partnership, they can also look at guaranteed payments as well, that will also become your wages as well. And that's for our partnerships. Now, a lot of companies which don't have payroll, say you're S corp and they didn't, they didn't pay themselves a salary. Uh, to save on self-employment taxes, would it be beneficial for them to go back and say, change it? Uh, no, not exactly. Because if you think about the program, uh, it's going to cost you about seventeen, eighteen percent. Pay self-employment taxes on those, on those wages and you're only getting twenty five percent. So for six, seven percent, it would not be beneficial for those people to do it and man their taxes and go through the, the process to do that. Now moving on to self-employed people. What they're going to look at for self-employed means if they're filing, they're incorporated, so basically they don't have an entity. Or they're a single member LLC. For those people, your wages are pretty much what the net income is. Okay, so after you take your gross, you minus your expenses and say you make thirty six, your wages per the month is three thousand. And based on that three thousand, that's what they're going to multiply by two five, point five. And I hope that kind of clears up for some people, basically how, how the payroll protection program works.
All right, great. So folks, thank you for joining. So basically this is now in a very evolving situation and things are changing day by day, even these federal programs. Every day we're hearing new things, for example, we today learned about a bridge loan, twenty five thousand bridge loan. And since we are accountants, we help you cash flow forecast and update it on a constant basis. Because everything is in the cloud and there are tools which do it on basically the real time. And then you can adjust your plan and carry on with your businesses.
Yeah, and then there's a few more things. Uh, today we just talked about the different SBA loan programs, but the CAREX, it was a big uh. A center for individuals and business owners. So there's also tax benefits as well, uh, that we'll talk uh next time. And if you have any questions regarding, you know, tax benefits, which is like the pay, pay sick leave credits. Uh, they're also deferring the payroll taxes as well. So if you have any questions regarding tax benefits, uh, please contact as well and we can, you know, discuss them directly with you.
Rishi, back to you.
Good. Okay, so this was uh very nicely done, Gary and Harvey. I truly appreciate you taking the time to be here. And uh, you know, I, I have to say that I've been corrected, you know, there were things that. Uh, the way they were situated a few days back, they have changed and we are hearing the latest and the greatest information from this team. So, so let's see if there are questions that we can get through. Uh, plenty of time left in our podcast. So Nipa was here very early and she was here even before me. So Nipa, why don't I give the floor to you to see if you have any questions that you would like to pose to this team here? Nipa, you can unmute yourself and then you can ask your question. So, yes, go ahead.
Very much, uh, Gary and Harvey for joining us. And my question was, we have applied for PPP and EIDL. Both of them, and our employees have also applied for unemployment. Will, I mean, if both, both of them, is it okay to apply that way or we will only get one of them or what is it?
No, uh, so I want to explain. So basically, what this is, the Paycheck Protection Program is, what they're going to look at once. They're going to base the loan amount on your two thousand nineteen, if you've been existence in two thousand nineteen. Say they give you a loan of twenty five thousand. Now what they're going to do is you have to go back to the bank. To show them that, look, my payroll levels are back to what they were be, before the crisis, you know, before the virus. Uh, to those levels by June thirtieth. So what you've got to do is say your, your payroll per month was four thousand per month, say in February, January was four thousand. You've got to get to four thousand level by June thirtieth. And you've got to have the same headcount, so you can't pay somebody, you know, two thousand dollars. And then, you know, if you had four employees in January and four employees in February, you have to get to four employees back by June thirtieth. So far as them applying for unemployment, that does not mess with this, long as they get back with you by June thirtieth. So, so the main thing you have to get in your head is, I got to get the same amount of payroll, the same number of headcount by June thirtieth before that day. And long as you do that and you use that money for payroll, then you're good.
You don't have to use hundred percent, seventy five percent for payroll and seventy five percent for other purposes.
Yeah.
Okay.
What I was saying, the, the part about, what I was saying, it was for contractors uh and self-employed people. Because the reason, if you think the logic of it, self-employed people which file on the Schedule C, their payroll is net income. So after they get their gross, they get, say they take a hundred dollars collections, right? That's the gross. And after paying their expenses, fifty dollars, they're left with fifty dollars, that is their wage. So basically, for them, they cannot apply for unemployment and at the same time, apply for a Paycheck Protection Program. So that's what I meant when I said that they can't do both of them.
Okay.
I hope that explains. And then your other question was about the EIDL as well. That you, like you said, you can apply for that. It's just that whatever it's going to be relieved, say, say you get a ten thousand dollar uh advance. On the emergency injury disaster loan, right? And then also you get approved for the Paycheck Protection Program for twenty five thousand. Once you go back to the government and say, look, I use this twenty five thousand dollar for payroll. They're going to only forgive fifteen thousand because they already gave you a ten thousand dollar grant. I, I, I hope that kind of explains that as well.
I got it. Thank you so much.
All right.
Excellent. So let's go to, uh, Nipa, you have any other questions? You had quite a few questions on chat window. Are you pretty much covered?
Most of them, uh, in their slides and all that, it got clarified.
Excellent. Excellent. So Gary, you were talking about the Montessori, Montessori school, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, two, we can talk about two scenarios. Uh, one is a Montreux School here in Fremont and they had for load their employees when they, when we told them about this program. They immediately signed up, uh, applied and Bank of America quickly done and then they, we ran the payroll as usual. And then they paid their employees from their own pocket. Because, because if you leave, let employees go, it's hard to get back employees also, good employees. So that is the whole idea behind it and they are leveraging this. And another, a logistics company, they don't have any business, businesses shut down, but they're still paying their employees. Because they want to retain the employees. So this is the whole idea behind is giving them at least eight, eight, eight weeks worth of, uh, two months worth of work till June.
Good, good, I like that because that's the whole purpose of this program, is to see how we can preserve the paychecks. And uh, and if the, the payments start happening, uh, then we can sort of see this uh. Sort of help out, but until that happens, uh, you know, we don't know how this will all play out.
Yep.
So Gary, uh, do you have a sense in terms of when will the first paycheck, sorry, the first loan amount start arriving into people's homes? Any, any inkling on that?
Uh, with the Bank of America, I'm thinking in another week or so.
Oh, really? That quick?
Because they have the money.
They have the money.
It's, it's all money, it's virtual money sitting somewhere.
Yes, yes, yes.
In the accounts.
And also I hear, hear that Bank of America will get about a three percent kickback from providing these loans.
I'm sure they definitely, they, they are, they are.
So, so it's in their interest to process it as quickly as possible.
And this is not people, but government paying them, it's not from the people getting benefit from their pocket, it's the government paying that.
Exactly, exactly.
And some of the, the EIDL thousand dollar, we have got confirmation from some thousand dollars, they received it, but. Not the entire ten thousand dollars, it's thousand dollar per employee.
Thousand dollars only?
Yeah, they had one employee, so thousand dollars they got.
Thousand dollars per employee?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you had a minimum of ten employees, you could get, you can potentially get.
Thousand, yeah. Well, we don't know what the metric is and nobody really knows, only the SBA knows. They take the data from it and they kind of base it on the metrics, how, how much they're going to give you, based on what they feel, you know, you need right now. So I guess to make it easy for them, they based it on employees. They're figuring, okay, give them a thousand dollars up, that'll cover them for about a week or two. Per employee, and then if they need more by then, hopefully their loan goes through. So that's kind of what I, I think basically what they're thinking is.
And it, this is such a hastily drawn program and it is being written, changing every day, we hear something new things and we keep updating our, our notes. Like today we heard about the SBA Bridge Loan, twenty five thousand dollars.
The money, the main purpose is they're trying to get the money out there, you know, and it's, it's not easy, like. Even people were expecting, I, I don't know why a lot of the people were expecting that the government would just give every business one of ten thousand dollars. I mean, there's so many, there's over thirty million businesses in the United States and there's only ten billion dollars allocated. So there's no way that every business would be able to get this ten thousand, you know? Uh, you know, there, and then even then, even if there was enough money, there, they just don't have the capability. I mean, there's millions of businesses, I mean, they could probably get the three days processing time in good times. But now with so many cases, there's no way they would be able to have a turnaround in three days. What, what happened is the three days, that wasn't the CARES Act, so that's what the Congress and what they voted on. And the law said that they had to give you ten thousand in three days. But the SBA never agreed to it. The SBA never said, oh, we're going to give you money in three days, that's what the law said. So what happened is lawmakers, based on what they're thinking was, oh, this should work. But on the other hand, it, the SBA still has to go through their process, you know, and that's why there's a hiccup. So you have lawmakers that don't understand the whole process. Uh, how, you know, these different uh government entities are going to operate now with the processing time is. Because if you look at the SBA, they only process like around sixty thousand loans a year. And now you have millions of loans that you're expecting them to process within three days or four days, that's just impossible, you know?
Great. Uh, I'm going to talk, another thing which we do is we have a profit approach, uh, which we use with our customers and some of them. Because whenever you are in business, uh, you are for making a profit, profit, not for charity. Uh, we've been, uh, we told some customers making two to three percent of net income, we say, please shut down your business. And we are sabotaging our own business, but that's how we challenge them. And every customer, every business should earn at least ten to fifteen percent net income. And in order to do that, the way we work is we work, have a profit approach, a profit method. We just use it, we call it profit approach and through which we give you cash flow, we give you a budget. For example, you want to earn fifteen percent profit, so every hundred dollar you save, fifteen percent will be your net profit. And then you have to pay debt also. So twenty five percent is debt, I mean, ten percent is debt, so twenty five percent from that hundred will go to your profit account and the debt account. And then we give you a budget with that seventy five dollars, you will run your business. So this is how we help you, this is a regimen that has to be built and we do it in our house and some of the. Early on customers, we did this approach and it worked and we are implementing in every new customer. We tell them about this approach and then they really love it and then somebody is forcing us to do that. This is again a new way, new way, innovative way of doing business and we help doing these kind of things.
So Gary, uh, you know, another question I had was with respect to these credit unions. There are lots of banks that are still not accepting these loans, loan applications, they are not ready.
Uh, I, I got your question. Uh, for example, another bank, uh, Bank of the West, there, uh, on Sunday, we got a message that, hey, it's available, but. We tried on the web, browser did not work. So then we reported back, they said, you can use the phone. So from, it works on, does not work on Android, works on an iPhone. We submitted the application through the iPhone and then we got an email back. That supplied these documents, so we had to fit, downloaded, we got the documentation from the payroll provider and then created the package and emailed it to them. So they're going to be processing, so that's what's happening.
Yes, yes.
But some of them may be giving physical applications, also credit union is small, they don't have systems, so, I mean, everybody wants to participate in there.
Correct, correct. So what I hear Gary is that, uh, we haven't gone through the testing of, uh, you know, their applications, their IT applications were rolled out into their system. And they haven't quite done the testing, so it's very spotty, it works in a particular browser, it works on this phone, on that phone. So what I've heard is that these folks, when they're applying for these loans, they are trying every and all option to see what's going to work. Because they, I mean, Silicon Valley has a bunch of tech savvy folks and they sort of know the limitations of rolling out applications very quickly. So they are willing to try out all different options. And there's one story I heard where the CEO actually, you know, he, he did not rely upon the accountant. Because he said, uh, there are too many unknowns and he was actually doing his research himself. And finally he submitted the application and he was waiting for confirmation, he didn't get it. He tried again, didn't get it, tried again, didn't get it. Then he checked with a few friends and then he figured out that you have to actually use a Chrome browser to go out and submit the application. So then he, he finally managed to and he got a, got a response back, you know, so it's pretty interesting, the, the kind of issues we are going. But the most important thing is, you know, we are all under, under stress, you know, I mean, there is, there is a huge problem with the economy. And so, you know, in spite of all these hurdles that people are facing, all it matters is if they are able to get money in their, in their bank account. You know, if that happens, then we can sort of bring this back together. So let's see if there are any other questions from people who have gathered here. So we, there are a few folks who have also called in, so you can just speak if you like. But let's see if there are any other questions that people would like to get answered. Anybody? Okay, so.
I'll use some few minutes about the, the profit approach which we do, that's a regimen, we help people build the regimen. With that, they're going to be guaranteed profit because. Especially in this time, you need the help with the cash flow and budget, budgets, et cetera. Which most businesses can do themselves, but if they need anybody, accountants, because we, we consider us, we are tech savvy accountant. And I've worked with Rishi, Rishi and IBM for many, many years and I have a tech background also, so we know all which browsers work and all that. And some of our customers, they really appreciate that we can help in that perspective. Thank you folks for joining.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, we can wrap up this call. And Gary, do you have your contact information for folks, Gary and Harvey? If you can share your slide with your contact information?
Yes, so on the screen you see contact.
Uh, can you please share your screen? Uh, can you please share your screen, Harvey? Yeah. Harvey, can you please share your screen?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Good.
Yeah, I'm based in Fremont and Harvey is based in Central Valley. He lives in Mountain House, but we are virtual firm. We work virtually. Now, cause everything is in the cloud.
So, so Gary, the whole world is watching right now.
So basically, right now, like I was saying, I, I just wanted to go over some of these things. Is there's a lot of things in the CareX that if you use it wisely, it's really beneficial for you. Uh, I just recommend that every small business owner, you know, if you're self-employed, Uber driver. Once the self-employed applications begin rolling out, which they're saying on the tenth. You'll have more regulations as far as what the rules are and everything. I recommend they apply. And then if you already have W two, you should already have applied. Cause this is a real good for you. Because what they're saying is you have to get the employees back by June. And I think the economy will restart by May. And so you basically, the government's paying you two months for your payroll. So this is a very good program. And there's also other tax uh, incentives out there as well, uh, which we'll discuss next time. And if you have questions, you can contact us regarding those. But these are real good programs that everybody should take advantage of, you know?
Next week we will do about the individuals, Rishi, if, if it's put in the calendar.
Yes.
And then we have another one after that, uh, about the profit approach and the cash flow, how we can help. Not only this time, but this is a good time to learn lessons also. In crisis, we learn and learn and. Try to thrive, thrive from there. President is saying we, we're going to start the economy with a bang. But that's not reality. But so we have to keep our own books and houses clean.
Yep. So, so Gary, the plan is for us to be obviously focused from a stimulus standpoint with small businesses every Wednesday. But also we'll start giving tax tips because the deadline is what, July fifteenth, right Gary?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
For California as well as federal. So we have some time, so we can have these personal tax discussions every Wednesday. So, so thank you all for joining in. I really appreciate it. And once again, Gary and Harvey, the team, you did a really solid job. And uh, there is still a lot of data out there. So please digging, digging through the data. And uh, if you find new stuff that you would like to talk about, we'll talk, talk about it next Wednesday. But we'll define a topic for next Wednesday as well and we'll keep continuing with these weekly webinars. So thank you all for joining in. Really appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Bye. Oh, yeah. Thanks, Michelle. I saw a comment from Michelle, so yeah. Go ahead, Gary.
I say stay, stay quarantined, healthy and safe.
Yes.
I was counting twenty two days, uh, when the governor said twenty one days. Initially, so it was yesterday, but we have to follow the law and for our own safety.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Take care, guys.
Bye.